Replacing and reconstructing some of our schools.
Okay, I know we have to move along with a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of concerns, but Mr. McGee, did you have one final comment before we go to number three?
Just a quick thing, maybe the state delegation could look into, why would they not, having spending all that money on the Jacobs report, why would they not allow the school department to use that report as part of their application to accept, you know, to get into the 50 percent reimbursement? I mean, the state spent millions on it and it's kind of seems foolish that we're not able to use that report.
It looks like a very easy thing to do.
We can have a discussion about it.
All righty. Mr. Waters, number three then, we'll break down on the agenda. We have a list, review and discussion for the League of Cities and Towns, their comments, legislative priorities that we've given a copy of, and some of the topics might be nice to be mentioned.
Right, so the memo I passed out to the town council, this is still a draft form, if not, because it's still a draft form for the league. It's some of the things that they'll be pushing for, but this is more of a, I just want you to keep an eye out for legislation and what the league is doing this year. Speaking for the league, the league has really ramped up its lobbying anticipation efforts this year. They brought on a lobbying firm to assist municipalities in pushing a couple of these platforms. Their number one priority for FY19 and the 2018 legislative session is to addressing the school construction renovation and school aid funding with the end of the funding formula. They're looking at how this will impact all the communities, as well as how the legislators can help develop principles and policies on school construction, again, regarding local contributions, maintenance of efforts requirements, and changes to financing. Going forward, there was a bill, I believe, was introduced late in the session on collective bargaining. I believe the mayor of, forgive me, it's north of Cranston.
Johnson.
Johnson, yes.
Paul Vassina.
Was pushing for legislation that would allow neutral third-party arbitrators, or would be Rhode Island judges or magistrates. That's something that the league supports. We often hear of other municipalities that have out-of-state arbitrators help decide arbitration cases, and they have no idea what's happening in Rhode Island. So to have retired judges and magistrates arbitrate cases, labor cases in the state, that would be very beneficial, both for the labor unions and for the towns, because they have a better sense of what's going on in the state of Rhode Island versus an arbitrator that comes in from Maine. Again, one of the things that is going to be huge for Coventry, as well as other municipalities, is the state aid to municipalities, especially with the phase-out of the car tax, and just ensuring that makeup portion that the state has committed to continues, especially with the deficit of over $250 million. That's something that the league and all the municipalities around the state are looking at. So we want you all to keep your eyes out for that and make sure that the car tax makeup continues. There is an increase expected of the tipping fees for the upcoming fiscal year, going from $39.50 to $47 per ton. That's something that we're concerned about. It was noted last year that the state came in and took, was about to take the revenues from the resource recovery and help make up the rest of the state budget, help make up some of the deficit of the state budget. I believe at the last minute, they're able to hold on to the surplus in resource recovery, help the municipalities not increase the tipping fees as much. But that's something that happened last year, that you should be aware of and keep an eye out for, that they might try to scoop away that revenue again from resource recovery. And there's another, a bunch of other smaller items that the league will be pushing, like please keep an eye out for league members of the legislative committee, they'll be up on the hill this session and pushing for league items. That's about all I had to say for as far as the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns and a couple of big items that they'll be pushing for the upcoming legislative session.
Okay, it'll be an interesting general assembly session, usually, but...
And the league will be finalizing its legislative points coming up further along in January, and they'll be putting out a final position paper for those items.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Waters. One quick, will you make sure, I don't know if the state has access to that, but will you make sure that the state, all our delegates get a copy of that with the league, so that finishes my own?
If you haven't had an opportunity to meet our new executive at the league, Brian Daniels, he's been around the state scene for a while. He was hired last year by the league and is really helping the league turn around its efforts to the public and the city.
Okay, next on the agenda was a matter of interest to myself that I wanted to discuss with our legislative representatives, and I know it's been being talked about up at State House now for a year or two, and in that Massachusetts is really on their way, I guess, but the legalizing of marijuana, I'm just getting buried with news articles. One of the most recent ones was coming out of California entitled "Legalization of Marijuana for Adults Poses Problems for People Dealing with Tains," and it mentions many, many educators, even people from working with boys' clubs and girls' clubs, that if, in fact, it becomes legalized, and hopefully it doesn't in Rhode Island, I know there's eight states where it has, and Massachusetts is a golf ball shot away, there's going to be a lot of issues, lots of issues. One of the biggest issues is if you end up, as a state Massachusetts, allowing marijuana to be bought in shops, in restaurants, et cetera, single servings. How do you convince your teenagers that it's not good for them and it's dangerous to use, when in fact their parents possibly will be bringing it home, as in some of the concerns in Massachusetts? They're backing pot sales at various businesses, yoga studies, studios, movie theaters, restaurants, massage parlors, bars. I mean, it just, I can't believe what I'm reading, when it's still against federal law, the bottom line. Another article out of Boston, basically today's paper, December 18th, they have social consumption as an issue, how the pot shops will work, they'll have a primary use license, then they'll have a secondary category type license. They mentioned home delivery may be available under strict sets, where you can order the legal or the marijuana to come to your home and be delivered. They have craft cooperatives, where you could set up a small business and do your own craft. May 10th, we have dangers of legalizing marijuana, and I think probably most of the state reps have heard from Nancy DiNuccio of Narragansett talking about all of the dangers. And I know it's going to probably fall to the General Assembly in one way or the other coming up. I guess one of the interesting ones was Sunday, May 21st, where in the Sunday Business Section, the entitlement was weed or work, all right? So in other words, you want to legalize marijuana, don't consider ever getting employed, not federally, whether it's military, not working for an electric boat, certainly not working for law enforcement. I don't know, I don't know who's going to want to hire you if it becomes legalized and it's in your system. So I mean, hello Rhode Island, and again, I guess being in law enforcement for 30-something years and seeing the problems, and knowing that there is no checkpoint on consumption, where you have breathalyzes for alcohol, and how much weed is okay, even though they only might sell an ounce, and how does that affect driving? And they say accidents are up, problems are up, et cetera, et cetera, and that's just going to happen in Massachusetts. And then, how do we draw the border wall, and what's going to happen with Rhode Island? And again, federally against the law. And I don't want to even go into medical marijuana, where doctors, for every doctor says, oh, it helps, it's, you know, controls pain, well, there's other ways to control pain, and there's another doctor says, no, it hasn't been proven. There is no benefit for medical marijuana. My daughter's in the Navy, she has military coming back with all kinds of wounds, mental problems. You don't want to mask the problem by covering it up. It only makes it worse. That's just my two cents, because I depend on the eight representatives to go up there and sound off, because this is not good. And if you want copies of these articles, I'm sure you've been given telephone books the last couple of years, but I know there's one senator up there from Cranston that just keep, and one representative I know, and I've seen it over the years, and they just won't, they won't stop pushing until maybe Rhode Island becomes like Massachusetts, and we become number state nine, and boy, my kids are pretty well grown, they're pretty intelligent, but I've got six grandkids. How do you explain to them it's not good, don't use it, when it's, oh, it's okay for parents? Then they got the billboard signs that are going to appear everywhere, Massachusetts, smoke, light up. And then I read in Worcester, where I went to high school in Holden, in Worcester, in the paper today, they had a 100-foot rolled-up marijuana joint, and they're all standing around taking pictures, and when are you going to light up, I guess is one of the comments. What? What? Okay, I guess I've nailed this enough, but I just wanted to, hopefully, send the word, I am one councilperson that's not. We've done some ordnance work here in Coventry, not a good thing, not a good thing. There's other ways to take yourself out or to ruin our kids. There's a lot of other ways. Look at the problems Rhode Island has. We lead, we lead in almost all the bad things. That's it.
Mr. President, if I may, might echo some of your sentiments real quickly. I am against recreational use marijuana. I am for medical marijuana, but I am against it. I don't think Coventry needs to have, if it gets to the point where we can have home delivery marijuana, that's pretty bad. I mean, I don't think it's a good thing for the town, and I hope the state delegation, I work in a field where I get drug tests quite frequently, and federal law supersedes any state law, and we're going to have many more people going on the state welfare system, because they don't want, they'd rather smoke marijuana than they would go out and work, because they, whether it's medical use or whatever. We're going to have a real situation. I don't think it's good for Coventry, and I really hope you guys would consider fighting against that.
Thank you, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. McGee, because anybody that operates equipment, any, any type of engine, any type of job that they may want, that's gone, that's gone. It's, it's not a good thing. Representative Nardoleo.
So just to piggyback on what you said about the probability of passage, in the past two terms that I've been up there, I've seen the evolution of legislation for passage, and it's continued to grow and grow, and as states have jumped on board for sales of marijuana recreationally, the surrounding states, and Connecticut is in consideration too. Us smack dab in the middle is, is very frustrating, and it's concerning for a person who advocate, who is an advocate against recreational marijuana. I don't see any good for the communities and the state. I think it's being looked at from a fiscal aspect of it, being apparent, and also being part of the community where there are children. My main concern is for our youth and the potential. The Attorney General's Office has communicated, I've communicated with them on research that they've been doing in continuation to this process, to the other states, the concerns, things that you're reading in the paper and that we, we see everywhere. I'm, I am opposed to it, and I always will be. So that's something that I would, I'd like to put out there. On the, on the aspects of medical marijuana, I have sat with individuals who have medical concerns, and they don't respond positively to prescription medication. It actually does them more harm, and they refuse to take it. They have been prescribed medical marijuana, and it subsides a lot of their issues and concerns. I've met with parents who have children who have seizures, and it does work for them. So being a supporter of the medical aspect of it, I always will be. Recreational, I will not be.
Any other ones want to make a comment regarding the topic? Mr. Representative Chippendale?
Thank you. I'm going to just infer from your comments that you're against. And with, you know, for or against the side, that horse has been duly beaten and is quite dead. If I had to make a guess from what happened this last session, it looked like there was some traction in sidebar conversations. It appeared like maybe there was some language that would be compromised and would be acceptable. I'm speaking from my perspective, my opinion, no one else is in this, in this audience here, from the legislature. Because it went to a committee, because became, the issue became a study commission to study something that's already been studied, and not study the issue at hand, what would the impact be on Rhode Island, business-wise, health-wise, et cetera, studying something completely different, seemed to me like it was sent off in the corner to die. I'm not going to tell you to take that to the bank, because I can't promise that that's what happened, but it sure looks like it, and it sure smells like it, and it sure quacks like it. I think I've used about four different expressions in there, but you know what I'm saying. It looks like it's been shelved for a while. How long? I don't know. I think the prudent approach is wait for Massachusetts to blunder, let them make all the mistakes before, let them go through all of the pain and all of the hassle. Probably that's the approach that we're seeing here. Whether or not that ever comes, comes into fruition around, I don't know. But I certainly wouldn't say it's going to happen in the next three or four years.
My concern is, my concern is, is that as I was, while I agree with my colleague, last year was the most aggressive I've ever seen with, with the fact that they polled every city and town. And the reason I surmise from that is to put pressure on the senators and to put pressure on the representatives, saying, these individuals are echoing that they want legalization in our state, and you need to respond. You need to respond to what they're saying. I've talked to many individuals in our town, and the, the way the questions could be phrased, we don't have certainty, but there is the very concern of the fact that there are strong potentials and negativity to this. They're looking at it from the potential of a fiscal aspect, which is an abundance of revenue that, the calculations are off in Colorado and other states that, that they're pushing. So it's, it's concerning, because there was a tremendous lobby for this, and I saw it most certainly last year, where the pressure was put on the representatives, cities and towns, the senators, by, by giving the percentage of polling. And it is concerning. So while, most things go to a study commission to, to go to sleep, let's say, for a while. Massachusetts is definitely going to be a responsive thing, and we don't know where the governor stands on this, on many different things, but most certainly on the medical aspect, she vocalized her opinion, but on the recreational aspect of it, I think that she's going to wait to see what the neighboring states do. I think that the information that came out last term is going to be something that she's going to work with. I just think that it's important that we, we really look at this and, and look at the negative impacts of this.
I thank you for your comments. I don't want to, again, dwell on the issue, I just know that they, they have their system down, they know how to politic, they know how to bring in all the horses, they know how to put the pressure on, and it's up to the people up there representing us to stand strong and do the right thing. And if, if home deliveries of recreational marijuana going in and having one serving, and think you can't leave with it, and all these possible, that is actually being designed right now in Massachusetts, they have till, I think it's March, to come up with their final recommendations, and then July 1st starts, if I'm not mistaken, or at least if the newspapers aren't mistaken. So that's a concern, because July will be here soon.
Rhode Island's...
Mr. President.
Well, we have Senator Rick Kottas from...
Yeah, yeah, I just want to hear from Senator Kottas and Senator Kettle on this issue, because Senator Miller is the one who's sponsoring.
The commission has met three times already, and they're supposed to be issuing their report at the end of March. That's their report, they have to, by state law.
Massachusetts.
No, no.
Rhode Island?
Okay, Rhode Island.
Massachusetts.
Rhode Island, the commission has met three times already, and they're going to meet again probably in January, February. They're coming out with their report the end of March, that's the commission here in Rhode Island. Whatever happens from that report, we're going to read it. I doubt very much there's going to be even enough time even to put something together, but I'm opposed to recreational marijuana. I think I'm speaking for myself, and I think if you polled the delegation. But it's going to be interesting what that report's going to say, what Representative Nardoleo said. We're reading a lot of reports from Colorado. The news was great at the beginning, but now there's a lot of problems in Colorado. It's not the money that's being generated, but it's what the effects are.
I read that too, and in the accidents, and the problems enforcing it, and nothing but headaches. And I don't know if that is going to be heavily publicized here by the marijuana proponents, all the problems. They're not going to say that. They're not going to bring that to the General Assembly. So I, again, my, my one is, with the General Assembly, the representatives, and I know, again, there's two sides to the medical marijuana. I only listen to some doctors I personally are related to, and it's not a good thing. My doctor, daughter, the psychiatrist, it's not a good thing, all right? And she's well-respected nationally, military and everything else. On the phone today with individuals I can't mention, but anyhow. Senator Kettle, tell us what you think, sir.
Well, Mr. President, Senator, I think we had a couple of go-arounds at the State House, and you and I were there together about this issue.
We did.
And I've actually have cosponsored legalization in the past, and I've been open to it. For a personal liberty standpoint, I don't really think the government should be telling people what they can and cannot do with their bodies. However, you know, looking at what's happened in Colorado, Massachusetts, I've been kind of more hesitant. Maybe it's grown wiser as I've gotten older, I don't know yet, but that remains to be seen. But I'm a little more neutral on it right now, and...
Senator, I'll take that, I'll take that, Senator.
So we'll see. We haven't fully brought me around yet, Mr. President, but maybe I'm getting there, we'll see.
Well, thank you. I think we're going on to the next one. Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Serbo.
I just want to add my two cents, if I may.
Sure, sure, I'm sorry.
Regarding the pressure that was put on us last year, I represent West Warwick Coventry, and you people know what robo emails are. I received a grand total of eight, in favor of eight.
That's good.
So that makes me wonder if people are, and they sign their name and address, and I look them up on my voter list, and they really do exist. So that makes me wonder if there really isn't the pressing want for it, or people just are ashamed to sign their name and address to a robo email. I received eight.
Well, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you for your comments, thank you for hearing me out. Number five, Councilman Kerry McGee.
Yes, this has been brought up just about every year that I've been on the council, trying to get this, this passed, as far as classifying our manufactured home neighborhoods as affordable housing. I know it's, it's been knocked down every time, and I think Mr. Assamone spoke something about Rhode Island, RIMP Act has to be, be involved in it somehow. I don't know what it's going to take to make it, it would be so good for the town of Coventry if we could get our manufactured homes so we can meet our 10% quota. Like I said, we try it every year. What will it take for us to, you know, can we get the banks involved? Can we, I mean, it's been shot down every year, and I just want to keep trying, because it would really solve a lot of our issues.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. President.
Yes, certainly.
Ms. McGee, this is certainly something that, that I am 100% behind. We've been doing this in Gloucester for several years for the same reason that you all want to do it in Coventry. It makes sense, we have a lot of, we have a couple of mobile home parks, we have a lot of folks who have those pre-manufactured homes, and they are, by all measures, affordable housing. We want them to be included in the state's cap, or goal, it's not a cap, their goal, so that we can meet the affordable housing standards. And, and we have encountered those problems over, every year we get closer and closer, but it's, whether it's the bank or this regulation, we're pushing forward. We, there has been more traction over the years. People are realizing, even folks in districts that are doing very, very well with their affordable housing goals, are realizing it's not as easy to hit that percentage, especially when you look at places that don't have infrastructure, you know, Western Coventry, the Western Park portion of the state with no sewers, there's no bus lines, there's things like that. That's been the driving factor, force for us to get those, those houses, the mobile homes, included as affordable houses. Certainly will continue to do that. Anything the town can offer will be helpful. I think, I'm guessing, but I think...
I think so, I think yes, I would say. Representative Morgan, I think, is wanting a comment.
Representative Roberts actually put in a bill last year, which we specifically mentioned, trailer, trailer parks and mobile homes. I want to make that clear to everybody that this is not making them Section 8 housing. It's just saying they're inexpensive housing, right there. So this year, we, we talked about it, because that didn't move last year. This year, we're actually going to use a formula. So right now, there is an affordable housing formula, and we want to actually extend that to any home, whether government money touches it or not. Because right now, for the folks that are in the audience, to be counted as an affordable housing unit, it has to have government money attached to it in some way. So in other words, state dollars have to be spent, or federal dollars have to be spent, has to be Section 8. So we want to take that away from it, that it doesn't have to have government money attached to it. It just has to be inexpensive, and that means below a certain percentage of the median price. So we're going to go with a formula this year, and see if we can bust through that, because I know in West Warwick, we barely make the cap, and I think everybody knows we have a lot of inexpensive housing in West Warwick. So we want to, we want to change that.
Can I just add something else?
Absolutely, nothing meant derogatory, I mean, telling people, they're just, they're beautiful homes, they're just...
Oh, no, they're nice.
They're just an affordable home, and that's why, I mean, some people take offense to it, and that's not what it's meant for. It's just an important thing for the town to have us meet our cap.
Senator Kettle is next, and then Councilwoman Carlson.
Yes, I think this is absolutely an important issue, something that I, Senator Fogarty has sponsored, Senator Morgan has sponsored, and I have cosponsored to try, because this impacts Western Rhode Island, because you look at Situ, there's only so much land that Situ can build on because of the reservoir. So to meet the 10% for them is impossible. Obviously, Western Coventry lacks the infrastructure that is needed, as Rep. Chippendale alluded to. So obviously, this is something that we're trying to push for in the Senate. I've served on the Housing and Municipal Government Committee, which has heard this legislation numerous times. And again, Rhode Island housing, RIMP Act have come in and have unfortunately killed it, because it doesn't meet their standards. So we need to try and find a way to kind of work through that, because it would be tremendous for the town of Coventry and Western Rhode Island. So, and then we need to keep pushing.
Can I add just one other thing? It's important for taxpayers, because whenever there's an affordable housing unit, the taxpayers that are not in affordable housing are actually subsidizing that through the, through the tax rate, because affordable housing tax rate is 8%. And other, yeah, so other, other taxpayers pay much more in taxes, so they're actually subsidizing those homes. We just think that's unfair. And you're right, I, I think some of the, the mobile homes are beautiful inside. Some of them actually have fireplaces and everything. So it's, it's not about them being trailer parks, it is about them being less expensive.
Councilwoman Carlson, then Councilwoman Loposina.
Hi, good evening. Didn't get a chance to say welcome to everybody, but as usual, great to see everybody here. This has been something that's come up several times since I've been on council, and obviously, it doesn't seem to always go anywhere. But, you know, I think we, we need an explanation, what's the benefit? I mean, yes, we would meet our 10%, but then once we meet our 10%, what's... but then once we meet our 10%, what's the benefit to the town? And also, I think when you, you've got to consider the other side of a coin. For people who live in places like Wood Estates, and they have beautiful homes, and beautiful property, and everybody takes care of it, you know, they, you've got to figure that, say, I don't know, a double home would go for $80,000. Well, anybody that's on affordable low mod would have to probably, there's a cap, correct, as to what they, because that has to be 30% of their income goes towards their housing. I think it's 30%, right? Is it? Okay, so they then would have to lower or devalue the cost of those homes to meet that cap. Well, you've lost tax revenue because your homes are not as affordable as they were. The people selling them can't sell them because they're not going to get the value that they want, you know, that they should be getting, because your valuation's probably higher. Who's going to monitor these people that are buying the homes that are low mod? Because you can't just, they don't just walk in and say, I'm going to put a bid on it. They have to meet all this criteria for percentage of income and everything else, correct? So who monitors that? Does that go to the Coventry Housing Authority to monitor? Does the state have some, some mechanism to vet the incomes and the finances? I'm not saying, you know, it's, you've got to look at both sides, I think, the pros and the cons. And I've heard about this for years, and it, as Carrie says, it doesn't go anywhere. Out in Western, it's probably not going to happen, because we don't really have, you know, manufactured home parks. But on the other hand, I think we, we need to look at everything before we jump in and say, the legislators have to do something with this, you know? And I know we have a 10%, we're, what, at 6% maybe? 6% of that, something like that? And, you know, I go to planning meetings, and the developers come in and they say, like Crompton Meadows, we're going to make it 25% low mod. Well, then after a while, that goes down to 7%, which is what happened the last time they came to planning. It went down to 7%. So I, I know it's getting harder and harder to meet that 10%, but I think we need to look at the bigger picture here and consider the people who are in their homes and what it might do to them before we change everything.
The biggest problem, too, Karen, is that when it does appear in front of, you know, zoning and planning, it gets fast-tracked. Anytime that any developer's going to come in and wants to put a certain percent of low mod, you know, affordable housing, our standards and our rules don't apply. I mean, they could just about do anything they want because it has, and I want to stop that. I want to keep our zoning and our planning. You know, if we had, had the mobile homes, mobile homes that were, you know, considered, that would allow us to keep following our zoning regulations.
Well, of course, the developers would go to SHAD, and that'll, that'll make, you know, they didn't go to SHAD, the State Housing Authority Board, and then they, they could appeal and all the other things that go on. But, and another thing is, I think, it's all well and good that, I don't know, is the advantage because we get federal funds if we meet that cap?
It's mandated by HUD.
Okay, so HUD, which we know is, that's, then we have to think about, and Mike knows this, because we went to meetings for it, with the...
Roadmap Rhode Island.
Roadmap Rhode Island, one of my favorite topics. Thanks, Nick. So then you're caught in that roadmap Rhode Island fiasco. And is that going to, is that still?
Yeah, that's the governing policy that's compelling towns to try to meet that 10%. That is it, the state guideline.
I just wanted to correct you. When we put in, this year, we're going to put in a formula, it's not just for mobile homes. It would be for any inexpensive home. So in Providence, for instance, they have triple deckers that are privately owned. There's no government money attached to them, but they would be inexpensive to rent. They could be counted.
What's considered inexpensive, Karen?
It would be by a formula, and I don't have a formula.
Oh, so where it's not.
Yes, where you take the median price, and then you say it's 30% of the median price of the median rent or something. So what would you have to give from, if you made a certain amount of income, what is 30% of it? And would that 30% cover the rent in that particular structure? But it could be apartments, it could be homes, as long as they are, they, that that formula matches what it would cost for you to pay to live there.
Well, there is a formula now, so are we, you're talking about a new formula?
It doesn't have to be, I want to say it doesn't have to be trailer parks. It doesn't have to be mobile homes.
No, but I think that's what Carrie was specifically targeting.
It could be, you know, triple-decker apartments. It could be anything where a person could go and rent it for less than the median price.
But they can do that now.
But it's not counted now. Those are not counted now, unless there's government money attached to them.
Representative LaBosse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this has been going on for a long time. It, from way back in 2003 and 2004, when Mr. Spearman and I were on the council together, as a matter of fact, one of the things that we had done was to help the people at one of the parks become owners, because that was what was required, that they needed to be an owner at that particular time. We made that happen, and somehow they changed the rule, and now they didn't allow the people, you know, who became the owners of the park to, to be included in that affordable housing. So, and again, what happens is, our planning, and we know, planning department has always been inundated by, by developers who can get density requirements, and again, fast-tracked. So that's the idea of getting us to 10%, you know, to help alleviate some of the, you know, things. And in a community like Coventry, where we have so much developable area, that's, that's part of some of the battle. So we think it's, we thought it was important back in 2003 and 2004. We still think it's important. And it's been going on a long time. So, that's my story.
Okay. Unless there's any other comments on number five, or why don't we go to number six? Councilmember Karen Carlson.
All right, it's not quite what I had asked about at the meeting last week, because this says discussion on legislation that pertains to 44-7-10, allowing Coventry to deny building and demolition permits to those that are behind, on their taxes, liens, and assessments. And really what my issue was, we have some businesses in town that have a history of not paying their taxes, and then they want their licenses renewed. And that's actually what I was trying about, was not the building permits part of this. My, my issue was the, some of our businesses that might need a vicualling or a liquor license, and they're, they're habitual late payers or non-payers. So that was my point.
Figure with the legislators here?
Well, I think that would be more appropriate for the learned Mr. Gorham to answer that one, too.
And I think, can't we do that on a townwide? I don't know why we have to do this on a state.
We don't, we don't.
It's already done on a townwide, because you already have the power to deny any business their licenses, and then you also have the state as a backup to make sure that businesses do pay their sales tax, their liquor license, I mean, their health department tax, division taxation. And when that letter of good standing comes to the town, then you issue the license. So I think the Exeter law that you're stating here is a lot different. I think it's pertaining to what you said before, Councilwoman Carlson, about building permits. I think in Exeter, it's a little bit different. That's why they carved that section out, 44-7-10.1, pertaining just to Exeter. But I think you have the safeguards already in the community.
I do so too. I'm not sure why this.
Well, this, this agenda item, as before you, has been something that's been advocated for in the past by our Tax Collector's Office.
I understand.
And, sure, if you'd like to, our tax collector's here tonight, Monique, I don't know if you want to speak to these two items. They're really small changes for tacking this, tacking the town of Coventry onto existing legislation that applies to Exeter and Gloucester.
Yeah, I would just like to add Coventry to 44-7-10.1, mainly because there are businesses in the town that don't necessarily have to get licenses, and they're the ones that are not paying. And I would like the opportunity to make all businesses apply for some kind of license, whether it be just for $5 or even free, but not being allowed to even have a business in Coventry unless they're current. You have businesses like Salon Galleria, Guttergods, D. Gorman Landscaping, Coventry Building and Recycling, Allen Excavation, that owe us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. I have judgments against a few of them, still can't collect the money. They can still do business in Coventry. We have no recourse. And I just want to get our name on this, so that maybe we can have some recourse, because it's within the law.
That one I agree with. I wasn't talking about the permits.
Right, I understand, yes. And then, and then as far as like the demolition permits, I would like that because of mobile homes. They don't pay their taxes. They let the mobile homes, some of the mobile homes basically go to crap. They end up getting demolished, anyone gets put on. I don't sell that tax money.
Senator Kettle.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the town of Exeter, do they create a whole bunch of licenses for this, or are they just for licenses that come before the council, like, let's say a liquor license or?
This statute, this statute that's cited only pertains to building permits. It doesn't pertain to other things.
The first, the second one.
Right, the second one is building and demolition.
Any license. If there's no contradicting the Charter of Coventry, I don't see why it couldn't be done. I think that would better be suggested by the solicitor. I can say that the Gloucester version was the same as the Exeter version. Folks with, who owned homes inside the manufactured parks, didn't own the land, they leased the land. And, yeah, they, they got into arrears, and it was easier and cheaper for them to walk away. And then the owner and/or town, or whoever, had to deal with the abandoned property. This change worked very well to get those SCOP laws to pay their taxes, or, you know, they, they were stuck in the mud. I don't know if it can be applied to building, to all sorts of licenses, though.
All, all Coventry wants is, we're talking about the second one here, which is 44-7-10.2. Coventry wants to join Gloucester in having the ability to deny demolition permits when they haven't paid their taxes. And it would help the town collect, as you said, Representative, outstanding taxes on people who have otherwise just walked away after running up a huge tax bills, just on fear to the rest of the people in Coventry. And there's nothing in Coventry's charter, I think you asked if there was. There's nothing in the Coventry charter that suggests that the state, well, the General Assembly could do it anyway.
Yeah, it was very simply.
Either it was in our charter. You, you have the authority to make a law.
So if we got a resolution, then we could submit the change.
Right. You know, this is one of those bills, if you just get it at the right time and the right place, you just might slip it through. So, it would be fantastic.
Gloucester, I'm not sure that there would be a problem.
Might not, might not.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may just pipe in on that, we are also concerned about 44-7-10-1, where Monique was mentioning. We want to be able to stop these businesses that are so far in the arrears, you know, and paying our taxes, yet they're still able to do business every year. We have no recourse to that. So we need, I don't know if it's something that we can do on a local level, or do we need state assistance in that? Because we, she mentioned several companies that are still actively doing business every day, and it owes thousands of dollars, and we have no recourse.
Right, that's right.
But do they owe thousands of dollars in property tax of the building that they're located in? Where do they owe taxes to?
No, the, Senator.
Tangible taxes.
The tangible taxes on some of the businesses that don't, they don't pay them, they become significant. We're talking up over $25,000.
But don't you issue them a vicualling license every year to operate in the town?
It's not just restaurants.
No, the hairdresser, she just mentioned that hairdresser.
No, we don't have, the best example were landscape companies.
So a hairdresser can operate in Coventry in the business without a license?
Excuse me?
She mentioned a hairdresser. I thought.
I'm not aware of a hairdresser. I'm aware of landscape firms that owe a lot of money to the town, and they were able to escape evade paying the taxes. There was no, we had no hook. We had no authority not to issue them a license to do anything.
But what taxes are they avoiding? Are they avoiding property taxes?
No, no, no.
Tangible.
Tangible.
Okay, try to tie it in maybe into the state, into the Division of Taxation, where they would have to get a letter of good standing before they can operate in the town.
Yeah, I'm just wondering that. Have you checked with the Treasury, the Treasury Department? Because they, if, if these folks who owe you money have any tax refunds, they may be able to help you.
You know, I.
They don't issue tax refunds, especially if you've already got a judgment against them.
I've already asked about that, and unless you have a license number, a date of birth, unless you have specific information about these companies, they can't attach it. They have to attach it to a person, a licensed person, a date of birth.
Well, you should be able to get the owner's, the owner's ID and stuff, and then the Treasury Department can withhold refunds. I mean, they're not going to charge them, but if they have any refunds coming, they won't get them.
Well, they have an FID for all taxes.
Yeah, they have, they have an owner, they have a tax ID number, they have all that kind of stuff. I talk with the Treasury Department and see if they can help you at all.
You know, it's all about having the leverage, though, with all due respect, Representative. And the leverage is found in 10.1. If the town has the ability to deny the license because they're way back on their taxes, that will get them collected. Having to go through the, you know, with all due respect to the Department of whatever, Revenue, it's just, by the time, by the time you go to grab their tail, they're gone. This gives us control, just like Exeter has total control. It gives Coventry control immediately within this building to stop people from running off and not paying taxes. And that's why it would be just as expedient for Coventry as for Exeter. It's, it's another simple change. One, you might be able to hitch a ride on another bill.
Council President.
Yes, we'll be able to put in a resolution. I was going to suggest we do, I don't have any problem submitting. This is a needed adjustment.
Right, thank you.
We can move on. Okay, all right. We will move on. Next on the agenda, Councilman LaBosse, number seven.
Number seven is regarding something I've spoken to a few folks about, a legislation to mirror what the state of Massachusetts has called Title V regarding septic systems. I had a conversation with Janine Burt Wells, who's the director of the Warwick Sewer Authority, regarding how we could solve some of our, you know, some of our financing issues and the costs of some of the things that she has had experience with. And one of, a few of the conversations that she's been having with not only her legislators in Warwick, but as well as legislators in Tiverton and North Kingstown, who are facing the same sewer issues that we are in Coventry. And the, in short, the Title V Massachusetts legislation has to do with getting tax credits for people who have had to bore the expense of either replacing or repairing their septic systems or tying into a sewer system. The, the exact amounts, I'm not quite sure, but I believe it's, it was up to a 40%, you know, up to 40% of the cost that they personally bore for that, and then obviously with a cap of $4,500 or $1,500 per year in tax credits for the state of Massachusetts. So we're looking for something to try to mirror that, to help, help our people that, and again, it's, it's a statewide issue. There, you know, that, there are other communities that are, that are going through it as well. So I'd love to see something with there, and I know Senator Kettle and I have spoken with him, so he may have something.
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilman LaBosse approached me on this issue, and Representative Roberts to try and, obviously, this is a very difficult situation, you know, with the Hazard Street area, people with this enormous cost of like $20,000. I don't have $20,000 laying around, but Warwick has been going through it. On the, we've had several years of dealing with the Warwick Sewer Authority and their issues, and again, it all comes down to cost. So, again, this 40% tax credit, I think is something worthwhile to look at. And we're having legislation drafted up right now, so introduced in January. And hopefully, the people will come up to the public hearings, and, you know, what they like, don't like about it, and to just try and get something to alleviate the burden on the people that would have to hook up to this system. So.
It's also with septic systems as well, too, you know, and Coventry is, you know, I mean, we're mainly septic systems.
Now, when you have to sell your house, you got to replace accessories. So that's another added cost. And, you know, makes the environment cleaner, but again, it's a huge burden on homeowners.
Senator Tarkis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, look, this Title V issue... I think, look, this Title V issue, I just found out about it when I received this packet. This town of Coventry has a serious problem with the sewer issue. We know it. Everybody here in the room probably knows about it. Probably half the people are here because of what's happening in Coventry. This delegation also has two major pieces of legislation that the council has received a letter regarding giving some relief to the residents, whether it's going to be the interest rate, why the town charges double interest rate, when that doesn't make any sense. So, there's going to be a piece of legislation to address that. There's also going to be another piece of legislation to address the issue, why are we forcing residents to tie into the sewer system, the assessments, where people, we've heard so many public hearings that they cannot afford it. So, before we jump into Title V, I think this issue really has to be discussed in detail, and we like to find out from the council where we are heading the next several months, or maybe into 2018, regarding Coventry sewer plan. I mean, before we jump into Title V and try to hopefully resolve a small piece, there's a bigger problem here. There's a huge, serious problem in the town of Coventry that we have not found the answers. And I'm not sure if you're going to see the pieces of legislation we're going to introduce, whether you're going to be opposed or for it. But I think trying to use Title V, Massachusetts issue here, we still have a lot of discussion to get to before we even try to even introduce this bill and have public testimony. I mean, we've been haggling this issue in Coventry for not just this year, but probably going back to the inception of the sewer program. And I think a lot of us have questions of the sewer program, and I think the delegation is even going to ask maybe the Auditor General to audit the whole Coventry sewer program to find out where the mistakes were made and where the flaws are. There's a lot of unanswered questions before we jump into introducing this bill to try to resolve the problem. I think we've got some serious issues.
Senator, actually, if you look at the, it actually says, "Septic repairs or replacement" first, so that's, it's not just about, not just about the sewers. We are loaded with septic systems here as well, too, and we're not the only community facing those problems. And that's what, in part of the discussion, so I think it would benefit not just people along the sewer line, but many people. I mean, there are, there are some of the, you know, contractors that, for a lack of a better term, are all backed up with a lot of work of failing septic systems in this town, as well as the other communities. And that, again, comes with part of my discussion with the Director of the Warwick Sewer Authority, who, that's her livelihood.
I understand that, but you're not going to resolve by passing, first of all, I doubt very much that this bill's going to pass this year or probably next year. It's probably going to take about 35 years.
That's good for discussion on it, and...
I understand that, but the main problem here today is, what do we do with the current situation in Coventry, with the current residents that are in this sewer debacle? Because I really think that we've got two pieces of legislation that hopefully you're going to support when the bills are introduced, and we'd like to have that discussion continue further on our pieces that Representative Nunes, he's left already, that he's going to introduce on the House side, and myself and Senator Kettle will introduce on the Senate side. And I think we really have to have a real in-depth discussion, and I wish we did open this discussion to public comment. I believe there is no public comment here this evening, because I'd like to hear from the folks that are here this evening on their views of this issue, too.
Well, again, Senator, I hear your comments, and it is being worked on, the town manager, the finance director, our sewer subcommittee, it is being worked on. So, before, I would recommend, before you introduce anything up at the General Assembly, Senate or House, that you make sure you consult with our town, because it could be just conflict toward the town. You mentioned mandatory. Mandatory is that it can be paid for as it goes by. It has to be paid for. And again, one issue is if it's not paid for by the people that receive or can receive the sewer line, and we have two members on the sewer subcommittee on the council in tonight, is that everybody may end up having to foot the bill. They have to be paid for. The work is done. All other, whole, it's held, it's suspended, and what has been done needs to be paid for. All right? So, I'd suggest, before, in the wisdom of the senators and the representatives, they go up there with their legislation, sort of like the Kent County Water Authority, you consult with the town, and you get our two cents worth, at least the town manager's, all right, because council people can vary. But I thank you for your comments, and I think that was a good proposal by Councilmember LaVosseñor. All right, so.
He has another response.
I have a couple. Oh, I'm sorry, no, sorry. Go.
Hold on. I was going to say that even this Title V has a cost. You've got a tax, you've got a tax credit. I mean, who's going to pay, where's that tax credit going to be reimbursed from? The state? The town? I mean, there's a cost involved everywhere. What I'm saying, Mr. President, is that we're jumping ahead with this Title V. We've got problems here in Coventry already that we still have not resolved. What's the future of the sewer program in Coventry? And we're jumping in, into the septic system.
Again, if I could, it's being worked on, and this was only one possible proposal to be considered. We're not saying, you know, pass it, but, you know, it's a topic that works in Massachusetts. It's a law, right, that works in Massachusetts? Maybe Rhode Island's not so far. Maybe Rhode Island's not so different from Massachusetts. I hope that is on the marijuana, but maybe not on the septic systems, the sewer systems, you know, everything else. And again, I understand what you're saying, but just as long as everybody's on the same page, the town especially, because we have the bills. State, General Assembly, I don't know what bills you pay. I know we're all residents, but I'd say work together, unlike the Kent County Water Authority, Senator. Because that, I would prefer it had been left alone, and I think we know that, but we don't want to get into that topic because it's not on our agenda. But, Mrs. Bacon, I think...
Mr. President, on this topic, are we leaving this topic?
No, I don't believe we are. Go ahead, Councilwoman Bacon.
Thank you.
Is that number five now? Title V?
Yes. It would have been helpful if we could have had the entire Title V law from Massachusetts. Instead, we just had a small section of it, and it wasn't even, it's from an engineering company. But, one thing I want to point out is, with this Title V, you need to have an inspection and a certificate. So, who's going to be doing these inspections and issuing these certificates? It just seems like it's an added layer of government that we're going to be putting on the residents of Coventry. We're going to probably have to form some sort of a department to go out and do this. So, I'm a little concerned in how much of these costs for these certificates going to be so you have a passing septic or cesspool. And then, also, what I had read in here with this title, you have to have a Title V certificate if you want to do any improvements inside your home. So, this just seems like this is pretty complicated, and we're also comparing the town of Coventry, which we don't, we're comparing to Warwick, Tiverton, and North Kingstown. They're coastal areas, where they mandated by the state to put in, I mean, to put in sewers. So, that's something that we really need to look into.
I don't have all the answers on Title V.
But I'm saying, if we had all the information, instead of just this one little bit, it would have been very helpful for all of us here tonight.
All right, Representative Chippenell.
I just wanted to add that when the cesspools were being addressed by the legislature, I think it was 2012 or 2013 was the last round that we did this, the tax credit element came up, and this was just cesspool, so this wasn't ISDS, this is the old hole in the ground. We adopted a lot of the Title V spirit in the sense that we wouldn't allow them to, at the time of title transfer, they don't have to have it repaired or replaced prior to. But the issue of tax credits was addressed, and the fiscal note on it was prohibitive. And this was just a very small amount of sewage disposal systems, because cesspools are almost obsolete, or they are obsolete, but they're almost gone, extinct in Rhode Island. So, the fiscal note that was given to the, to the Environment Committee was cost prohibitive. I believe that is a good, a good strategy, Councilman. I think that, that a tax credit is, is something that would help spur that. I don't know that it'll happen, though, based on finances.
I'm asking you to explore the possibility. In the next state, it's something that would possibly benefit the people of not only our community, but in many areas around the state.
Absolutely, great.
That's my reason for bringing it forward.
It will go, it will go forward, thank you.
Mr. President, before you, real quickly, we sent you...